Call attendance, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Michael Pearson. Pastor Pearson is with the Seventh Day Church, Advents Church. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us, Pastor Michael.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Eternal Father, Ancient of Days, we invite your presence with us this evening. We ask for your blessing on the proceedings. And when all is done, we ask that you give safe passage for everyone back to their homes this evening. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for joining us. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, move. Ten A, there is no discussion. So I think ten A will come off the agenda. With that change, I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in second to adopt the agenda. As change, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Mr. Clerk, anything under item four or five? Number five.
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton?
There were no changes to the consent agenda. I move that we approve it, as published, for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second?
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we'll move into our community presentations. We'll start with our Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report. Hello, Jessica. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. So, my name is Jessica West and I'm the current president of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission. I've been on the commission for about three years and I've absolutely loved it, working with the Parks and Recreation Department staff on the wonderful amenities and activities that they're constantly planning and implementing. But tonight, I'll just be here to discuss some of the top things that improved from our goals and accomplishments for last year when I was the vice president. So, our number one goal, which has been a goal for the last three years I've been on the commission and continues to be a primary goal today, is the supporting the development of our pathway system and the connections of those pathway systems. So we've, each year, we continue to make wonderful progress. I think some of the items that we were able to complete last year were like Segment F, the Linder to Eustick Roads near Tully Park. That was the 10-foot widening project that widened that pathway. That was completed last year. The Segment H, the Pine Avenue, that pathway system was completed along with ACHD's project to widen Pine Avenue. But moving forward into this year, we're going to continue to work towards adding a rest area at the road crossing. So that project, the pathway's been completed, but we're continuing to work towards adding a rest area right there. Another part was Segment H2 was completed and we had the ribbon cutting last year on Fairview. That connected Fairview to Pine Avenue. So now that connected pathway system is up and running. And one of the things that I really enjoy is the spring pathway bike tour. I think everyone is invited on that. I'm not quite sure, but that's a wonderful event because this is our number one goal and it really gets us out there. We're able to ask questions and get answers immediately and see the progress each year that the staff has been able to make and really just see the improvements in action. So I know, I thoroughly enjoy it and each year, we try to keep it relevant to the projects that we're working on. So last year, we started out at that Segment H2 on Fairview Avenue and worked all the way up to Segment D, which I kind of skipped over, but that's the 10-mile and Black Cat Roads where we're trying to add a trailhead. But we were able to get on our bikes and go all the way through some of the parks, Tully, Rita Husky, and really get to the whole other side of Meridian. So that was really wonderful. And we continue to try to do that each year. So this year, I think, we're still defining our pathway tour, but we're looking at seeing how close we can get to the upcoming high school location. So we'll see how that goes. There's a lot of disconnections there, so we're going to see. But that puts it into focus and so when we are planning those pathway systems, we know exactly what we're talking about because we're all on our bikes. We were there. We can kind of discuss in detail the surrounding areas. So it's a wonderful opportunity and I hope many of you are able to make it this year or potentially next year. The next major goal and update that we'd like to discuss is just the Discovery Park. That is well underway, under construction, and is expected to be open this summer. So that's just a wonderful project. It'll be a huge amenity for our community and everyone is really excited about that, so we continue to work hard. Parks and Rec staff were able to make a lot of progress through the months of December and January because we had wonderful weather. Right now, not so much, but we were, you know, they continue to be ahead of schedule and under budget on their projects, so it's just wonderful. And like I said, it'll be open this summer. The next item is the band shell at Kleiner Park. This is for the performers. That's well underway. Construction on that should start, weather permitting, as soon as possible. But it will be installed before Gene Kleiner Day in June, so we can all look forward to that. It'll probably be installed earlier than that, but by Gene Kleiner Day in June. We continue to coordinate with the City of Eagle, their commission. This is the next item, to connect our communities, because I know it's a major goal of mine personally and the entire commission and the department to be able to connect our two communities together. People in Meridian will be able to get to Eagle and specifically the Green Belt would be a wonderful amenity to be able to get on your bike and get to safely and vice versa, Eagle being able to get to all our wonderful amenities here in Meridian. So we'll continue to work with them. We anticipate they're coming next month to present some of their updated projects, but we'll just continue to focus on that as much as we can to connect our amenities. The next item is along the same lines. We continue to try to build and develop partnerships for different amenities in our area. Last year, we completed the Heroes, the art, we worked with the Arts Commission to complete the Heroes Park Art Installation. And also another partnership that was well underway and completed was the Fix-It Bike Stations that were in coordination with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. This year, I think you guys just recently approved the two artwork, the sculptures for Champion and Renaissance Parks. So we'll continue to progress and work through those installations. Our commission continues to try to be actively involved and present at these community events so that we can provide adequate feedback and input to the Parks and Recreational staff and departments. And that's really something that we really put on one of our goals and items because we all want to be involved as much as possible so that we, when the department is planning them, we have relevant feedback. We understand and can represent our community members as best as possible. One of our biggest events is the Winter Lights Parade. Of course, we get a ride on a float, like all of you, and really get to see all the community members and get a chance to engage with them. Joe Greer continues to be leading that commission. And so that's just a wonderful event that we all really look forward to. And finally, I just want to mention, we were always looking for ways and agencies to work with to build amenities or collaborate with to add more for our community. And one of the things that we recently heard about was with the Senior Advisory Board, for instance. They're proposing a project, which we, we'll see the details of next month, to potentially have a fishing dock at Kleiner Park for the seniors. So that's going to be a really exciting project, just one of the many that we're hoping to continue to work in partnerships with other agencies. Last month, we were able to see the library presented a reading storybook idea for Kleiner Park, which we also thought was wonderful, where the books could be interchanged. I don't know if you, you did receive or see updates on that, but it's a storybook walk where there will be installations of different pages and the books can be swapped out, but it allows seniors to have visitors and do a short walk with, say, their grandchildren or other family members and read a book together in like a small walking area near the senior center at Kleiner Park. So we're continually looking for different agencies to work with to add amenities to our parks and also add exciting stuff to our events. So I just want to say, those are the top things that I thought you guys might want to hear updates on. But like I said, we continue to look for more projects and I just want to say, I really enjoy being on the commission. I love being able to work with the Parks and Recreation Department. They do just wonderful things. They're constantly impressing us and going above and beyond and it's just really exciting to see all the fun activities and amenities that are coming to our community, so.
Thank you, Jessica, and I know they appreciate the commission and every member and the things that you bring to the Parks Department in the discussion and bringing ideas to life as well. You're a very active commission. You put a lot of time and effort into it and you personally, going the last three years, now you're chairing it. It certainly underscores the dedication that you've brought to your position as well.
Well, thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jessica?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Maybe a comment and then just a thought. Jessica, thanks for the report. As many times I've heard this, this is the first time I've learned that pathways are the number one priority of the Parks Commission. So I really appreciate you passing on that piece of information. And I applaud the commission's effort to kind of look at this regionally and connecting Meridian to Eagle. I think that's really forward-thinking. Yes, I don't know who the Parks Liaison is of Genesis. I guess, in light of hearing that pathways is the number one priority as we go into budget season, I'd hope to maybe see an increase in funding for our pathways than what we've seen in years past. I think if that's the number one priority of our Parks Commission, let's put some additional finances behind that so that we can support this commission with that priority. That'd be my recommendation.
And I think there's been a lot of work on the next section of pathway and I was thrilled to hear about the spring tour, looking at how we get to McDermott in a safe manner. That will be interesting. I'll be there with my bike and my helmet, so seeing how that works. Ms. Mylum?
Madam Mayor, Jessica, great presentation and I just want to say thank you to you and to all of the commissioners. And you spend a lot of time and have very thoughtful discussions at meetings, sometimes go late. But that's good. That's because you really, really put a lot of love and care and thought into every decision and everything that you're doing. So thank you very much for your.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for joining us tonight and I hope you'll extend our thanks to the rest of the commission. Okay, item 8B is under our Transportation Commission. Mr. Ballard, hi, now you guys are very much kept busy with prioritization and parking and all kinds of fun things.
Yes.
We look forward to your update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Roberts, Mr. Borton, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Burnt, Ms. Mylum, Mr. Cavanagh. It's my privilege to address you this evening. I'm David Ballard. I'm currently the Chair of the Transportation Commission. And I'd first like to recognize the city's efforts, if you will, about getting a place at the table with transportation groups. The question comes up, the city doesn't build roads, but I recognize through your efforts, you have created a partnership with the road building agencies. And that leads me into part of my conversation is, as part of the Transportation Commission, we get to interface with those agencies, ACHD, ITD, the Police Department, VRT, Compass. So there is that opportunity to have a small voice in a larger voice that you share. But I'd also like to recognize that I collaborate with eight other very enthusiastic involved members. They come, they've done their work. We get into the weeds, if you will. I recognize we're an advisory commission and we can make resolutions, recommendations. But we take our work seriously, but I think we also have fun doing it. Now, I've been on the commission for five years and I've come to develop a greater appreciation for the movement of people and freight in the city. And by movement of people, I'm talking about cars, talking about bikes, and yes, scooters. And a lot of emphasis on walkways. We have spent a lot of time talking about crosswalks and the safety of children. And that leads us to parking issues around schools that we've had a conversation with and people ingressing and egressing the schools. When I also talk about the agencies, an issue near, dear to me are the freight issues. So we have heard from the Freight Advisory Group and that's information that's brought that we pass on to the city. We have spent some time in just recently concluded prioritization. And I would single out Mr. Lewis on the commission. He's kind of shepherd us through what he thinks are priorities. But interestingly, as we look at those prioritization projects, each member seems to bring something to the table in a discussion. Should it move up? Should it move down? Is that a good idea? Is there a better idea? So we get a good sense there. One that's kind of interesting is speed zones and traffic controls. We have an opportunity to make requests to have speed studies. And so again, we have a voice. We talk to ACHD and we can get that, at least get that process initiated, if you will. We've had several instances of traffic going through neighborhoods. One in particular is the traffic, being able to cross a private lot, if it will, to get between two subdivisions. We can't make a decision on that, but again, there's a fair discussion about, are there some resolutions? And it brings some information to the table. When we talk about traffic, we had conversations, had a report from Sergeant Arnold about right turns and the hazards of turning on left blinking yellow signals. So we analyzed or at least have a conversation on a number of risks and made some input how to address those. One fun one was to hear from Harvard Transit and we had a field trip over there. I think that's a wonderful project that the city has been able to implement and develop. And that is a bus, if you will, for senior and impaired citizens. Couple other issues, again, that's on my private side. We had a conversation about compression brakes for trucks inside the city and also a truck route and made recommendations to the city on those two issues. An ordinance being taken up, I think, maybe on comp brakes or the compression brakes. Truck routes was not an issue that was passed up to City Council, at least from the commission. That's a general overview. I bring a little color commentary. I think you've had an opportunity to read the report, but those are my impressions and what stands out to me and what keeps me involved. And again, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the other eight members because they bring something, like I say, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of involvement, and I think it's a very good conversation and an opportunity to hear from the citizens of the cities and residents. And then two of us have participated in the transportation side of the review of the comp plan, comprehensive plan. So we've had our fingers, if you will, in a lot of different areas. Questions for me?
Thank you, David. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Ballard?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I don't have any questions, but as the staff or the council liaison to the Transportation Commission, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Ballard, it's the President Ballard, excuse me, said. That commission, I enjoyed all my commission roles, but there is a lot of media issues that our Transportation Commission weighs and we've seen many of those issues come before the council, many in the past 12 months since you've last been here. I just wanted to share to the council, there is a robust collaborative group that takes on these issues in a, in a unique way with a lot of different stakeholders being represented. I think President Ballard does a great job of chairing the meetings. I think it's also important to recognize Caleb and he does a great job as our staff liaison to keep the commission moving forward and on point. He has scheduled outings for the commission to actually go and see some of the projects they've worked on. It's really a well-oiled machine and a great team. And I just wanted to say thanks for, for serving and just for the council, for the public to be aware. So much of what we do impacts our transportation. It is a great place for our citizens to be involved. I'm so glad we have this commission and appreciate all they do.
Mr. Cavanagh, I appreciate it and I'm somewhat embarrassed because I needed to make a bigger star next to Mr. Hood's name because he does a wonderful job of keeping us on task, organizing us. And I apologize, I should have had two stars next to his name.
I would echo Mr. Cavanagh's comments about the work you have done. You know, David, you are at almost every community event, listening to the citizens and listening to the conversations about traffic and other related issues that come up, like parking near school zones and path, even getting into pathways and, and safety on sidewalks and, and many areas that are on top of mind of our citizens. We appreciate that. You, you take your responsibility as a commissioner to that next level and that is noticed and greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. It's important to keep the infrastructure in mind and, and again, how we move people and freight.
And you're correct. You guys touch on many different aspects of the moving goods and services and people through our community. So thank you again for your service and for your report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
And Caleb, you have been exemplary in, in our transportation efforts, key to that collaboration with all of our agencies. So thank you for them.
Two stars. It's a big deal. Platinum, I'd go platinum.
Anything further?
No.
Item 9A is Resolution 19-2130. This is a resolution appointing our youth commissioner to the Meridian Transportation Commission. Michael is here in our audience and before I ask for your approval of this resolution, I'll see if Michael has anything he would like to say.
I just want to say that I'm honored to be, have the opportunity to be appointed to the commission and I look forward to serving the community.
And so, Michael, maybe you can tell us a little bit about your interest in the Transportation Task Force or, I'm sorry, commission?
Commission.
That just showed you how long I've been around.
I, I mean, I'm a fairly new driver, so I have a different perspective on the roads than other more experienced drivers and I think that could be insightful for the commission. And I think being a student at Rocky Mountain and seeing how students react to the roads, I think that it would be helpful for my view and experiencing that through the community. And I find that transportation is really interesting, seeing how we are able to move a mass of people to where they need to be.
Well, thank you so much for your interest and we look forward to your service on the commission. So thank you for joining us. Do you have someone with you tonight as well?
Yeah, it's my father back there.
Wow. Hi, Dad. Thanks for joining him. Thank you for being here. And with that, Counsel, I would entertain any questions or if you do not have any, would entertain a motion to approve my appointment as for the youth commissioner on the Meridian Transportation Commission.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I'm going to make a motion, but just maybe a request. I recognize these appointments are only on an annual basis. Michael, I appreciate you coming in the middle of the year to help the Transportation Commission. I think your school that you attend and, and your perspective will be very well welcomed at the commission. But Madam Mayor, maybe just a request that should Michael enjoy serving on the commission and wants to stay on for a second year, that maybe he receives some consideration so that he can get a full experience in serving on our commission. Should that be something you would want to do?
He absolutely will.
With that, Madam Mayor, I move we approve Resolution number 19-2130.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve the appointment for the Meridian Transportation Commission under 9A. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Well, thank you and I know that Caleb will most likely be following up with you and get you the kind of materials you need before your first official meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Congratulations.
Awesome. So cool.
I love it when one of our youth members actually has an interest in transportation. So there you go, Mr. Ballard. Your next commissioner.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I've heard a lot of conversations about parking at, at Rocky Mountain, so hopefully Michael will be the solution that we have been looking for.
Attaboy, Mike. Attaboy, pressure's on.
Well, so that, that brings up a story. So the value of the youth and what Michael had said, you do bring a different perspective. So when we first added youth on commissions, we had a youth member, and I don't advise this. He was late to almost every meeting, so timeliness is great. But he showed up a little bit late. They were trying to figure out a solution to an issue off of 10-mile as you pull into Parkside Creek. You might remember this, Caleb. But we had cars taking that curve and traveling into the house that was on that block. And they were trying to figure out what was the best method. And of course, we like sometimes overcomplicate it and have great solutions that take a lot of time and et cetera. Well, he came in and he goes, "Well, have you considered X?" And everyone kind of looked at each other and said, "Oh, wow. What a great idea." I think it was done in a week's time because it was that simple and it, it's been effective, too. So we appreciate your interest and look forward to your views and perspective because sometimes we bring, we make things more complicated. Okay, item 9B is Resolution 19-2131. This resolution appoints Seat 1, Seat 4, Seat 5, and Seat 6 of the Meridian Arts Commission. Ms. Malden and I committed or had interviews and we're really excited what, to maintain Bonnie on our commission. She organizes our art gallery every month and is an artist in her own right. As well, Maria and Lynn bring a whole different perspective to the commission. So very excited for the talents and perspective that they will bring and I would stand for any questions. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Borton?
If I may, I would move that we approve Resolution number 19-2131, appointing Lynn Smith, Bonnie Griffith, Leslie Malden, and Maria Zampa to the Meridian Arts Commission.
Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve item 9B. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9C is Resolution 19-2132. This resolution appoints Trey Burnt to Seat 6 on the. Treg Burnt to Seat 6 on the Meridian Development Corporation. Certainly, I will not defend Mr. Burnt, but would entertain any questions, if you might have them. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
What's his name again? Oh.
That's exactly right.
I move that we approve Resolution number 19-2132, appointing Mr. Treg Burnt to Seat 6 on the Board of the Meridian Development Corporation.
Is it Burnt? Is it Burnt?
Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I made a second.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is a tough crowd.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Stain.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Stain.
Did you want to make a speech?
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Burnt?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Excited to wrap my arms around downtown and make a difference. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for dressing up for this appointment.
My pleasure, Madam Mayor.
Okay, item 9D is the findings, facts, and conclusions of law for H. 2019-0002. Mr. Hood.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is something that typically would be on your consent agenda, but we pulled it off to tell a little bit of a story here. So, earlier this month, the council approved this project, allowing the applicant to modify an existing development agreement. This project is located on the northeast corner of Franklin and Locust Grove. The property was originally owned by one single property owner, but has recently been sold to two different property owners. The modification of the development agreement was intended to omit the, the subject properties in favor of a new development agreement, but that wasn't in the staff report. So, the staff report has been updated and the findings to reflect that there's now two separate property owners and two different development agreements that control each party's interest in the property. So, that standalone development agreement and findings, again, are now part of the record that are before you now. So, that's, that's what you have, requesting your approval of that this evening.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Caleb, do we need to reference a new date for a staff report as part of a motion to approve the findings, or the findings themselves? Do they reflect the date of an updated staff report?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's a good question. I didn't actually check to see if Stephanie changed the date on the staff report, and I don't have the packet up right in front of me right now, so, but it should be in your packet. So, whatever that date is on that staff report, that is what I would request you review and approve this evening.
Madam Mayor, I believe that date was February 5th, if I'm remembering correctly from reading it earlier.
Madam Mayor, that is the correct, original hearing date. I don't know if, again, I don't know if Stephanie updated that since that date to reflect a, a more recent date, so.
Madam Mayor, maybe another way to go around it, about it, is the staff report that's in our packet for this agenda item, it says February 5th. Still might have been updated. Do we know if the, if, if the approval goes with the staff report that's in today's packet? Is that sufficient? Am I sure we have the right one?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, again, yes, that is my understanding from Stephanie, that she uploaded the most current staff report and fi, including the findings and conditions that reflect what she would like you to, to approve this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the staff report does reflect today's date. So, that is the most current one. It says findings on February 26, 2019.
Oh, yes, at the top.
Thanks.
Anything further? I think I had a...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You're gonna get one, sorry.
I mean, a motion.
I almost muddied it up. I would move that we approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law for COPE Collision H. 2019-0002, as reflected in the staff report of February 26th.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings of fact dated February 26th. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9E is the public hearing continued from last week to have staff bring back the process they recommend in moving forward on a vehicle-sharing program ordinance. Mr. Nary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have a memo in your packet from Ms. Kane, who has been the one that has drafted the ordinances and such. We had a discussion with the staff, and the, and the question that was posed to the staff committee was to bring a recommendation to you based on the discussion that you've had over the last number of weeks on what we would recommend the city do, and again, it provides you the options moving forward. After a lot of discussion amongst the committee, the recommendation is to do a, a single vendor RFP for varieties of reasons. Some of the concerns were essentially the, the, the race to, to filing the application was key in the current ordinance and the way it's crafted. That was a concern that was expressed by a number of members of the council, that you really don't know who you're gonna get. We had a concern that's been expressed a lot of times about the outreach and the, the, the public type of communication that's gonna be done by whoever the vendor or vendors are. Again, with a, with a, a race to submit application time, we don't even know who that person is. There's an application deadline, there's a three-week period in which the background is done to determine if they've met all the qualifications of the application, and then the award is done, and there's a 30-day rollout. So, there really is not a tremendous amount of opportunity to do that. With the RFP process, you get to set the parameters of what you consider to be the most critical things that you as a, as an entity, as the city wants to see in this type of ride-share program. Whatever the, the key concerns or the key issues can be, and Ms. Kane had included a few of those in, in the example, but you get to set the stage. We have weighted criteria, we have a committee that selects the, the eventual successor or the eventual, excuse me, the eventual franchisee based on the weighted criteria. So, the difference between the two, one of, the application process simply puts on the vendor the, at best, the, the requirement to tell us what they're going to do. And after the fact, whether they do it or not, may be critical on whether revocation or renewal would be allowed. On the other side, the, and, and the problem is, is there's no weighting to it. So, I'll, I'll take an easy example. If one of the concerns of this council is how is the public outreach gonna be done, in an application process, they could simply say, "We're gonna put it on Facebook." That's all they have to do. There's no, there's no weighting or, or specific requirement necessarily in applications. In RFPs, you can put weight to it, put specifics, put detail, or give greater weight or credit to those that provide it, so that you have, if that's a concern, that's a way to get at it. Now, again, you can have RFPs that people commit to doing a lot of things and don't perform. You have applications that people don't commit to doing a lot of things and perform very well. So, I recognize that both sides have, have issues or concerns. We have a lot of success in RFPs. We do a lot of them. We read a lot of them. We have a lot of staff that, that reads them in varieties of different topics. There was a concern that was expressed, that sometimes in the RFP process, people say a lot of flowery things that don't necessarily mean it. I don't disagree that that can occur, but you are looking for concrete detail specifics when you are looking at RFP. That's how you, that's how you score them, that's how you rate them. Mr. Watts, our, our purchasing manager, you know, was in the, the discussion and said, you know, for example, there was a discussion of, by some members of the council about references. Many, many vendors can give you a reference. What, what Mr. Watts says, what, what we normally do in a lot of these RFPs is we don't seek references. We seek where do they do business. We then go do the, the background. We go look at who, where they've done business and how successful they've been. Because it's easy to get people to, to tell you how well they've done. It's a lot harder to go find people that don't tell you that. And so, his view is that's, that's incumbent on us as the raters to do that. So, there are ways that we can get to that. Is it perfect? No. But, from all the concerns that have been expressed, that's what the committee tried to weigh and say, if that's what, if that's the desire of this council, the way to get what you want is, is that method. You will have more likely success in getting that. And one of the concerns that was discussed is, again, the, this is the second shot at it, and there was a concern by the committee members that doing it again, if we aren't successful, it's going to be a very difficult issue with the public, that we maybe did it wrong a second time, or we didn't really do it as well as we could have a second time. Again, there's no perfect system. We, we certainly have had some occasions in the RFP process that we haven't necessarily picked the best vendor for some reasons, and we've been able to address it better. Here, again, when you're talking about revocation and trying to capture poor business practices, poor response times, poor reaction from the public, I think especially with two vendors, you're gonna have a lot of people trying to report complaints that we will have a hard time discerning, was it a green one, was it a blue one, was it a red one, was it a yellow one? I mean, it, it's just gonna be very difficult to address it in the licensing criteria. So, that's the recommendation from the committee. I can answer any of the questions you may have from Ms. Kane's memo, or any other questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. Counsel, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Not so much a question. I appreciate all that, that background and detail. The last week's discussion I missed, but I watched the video and, and kind of got caught up on the discussion amongst our crew on this particular issue, and, and got a better understanding of what the committee's been doing, and, and the pros and the cons and the trade-offs that Mr. Nary describes. There's not necessarily a perfect process, but it seems to me that this RFP process that's being recommended makes the most sense. I think the pros outweigh the cons. I like the schedule. Quite frankly, it looks like it's about by the end of May. There is a selection and, and a vendor potentially ready to go. I don't see it, it's not a, a process that replaces an ordinance. Quite frankly, an ordinance is still gonna go forward and still be passed probably that same day. It would just be modified to accommodate the selection process occurring through the RFP as opposed through, through COPE. And I, I agree with Mr. Nary's observations on what's the most effective way to, to properly select somebody. So, light of the fact that this is a little unique, you know, allowing individuals to ride these scooters on sidewalks where pedestrians are designed to be, and it makes the most sense to use the best selection process. So, I'll be supporting what's proposed by the committee, going with an RFP, having this 90-day timeline constrain that process, and then having legal facilitate the ordinance necessary to be ready for approval at the time that somebody's selected. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cavanagh.
Question, maybe for Mr. Nary. The change from two qualified vendors to one single operator, can you share with us the, the thought process behind the committee in bringing that change? Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cavanagh. So, in the, in the discussion on the licensing side, and talking to the varieties of vendors that were out there, there's a, there's a number that on their business model seems to make the most sense on trying to operate a ride-share program. And they would all prefer a single vendor as well. I mean, they would prefer to have the exclusive franchise. And it was trying to balance that desire of, of getting this out and doing this in a licensing setup. But, when, when it was returned back to the committee for at least a recommendation, again, if you're looking for the best selection, then, one, to see how does this work? How will it work here? Our footprint for the use of these types of vehicles is different than other communities. And so, the, we did discuss whether two could work, and it, and it can. I mean, that's certainly not, it doesn't have to be. But, again, if you want to see how does it work, what works the best, does this really work in our, our environment here, again, having a single vendor for contacts, response times, issues, problems, concerns, again, we're trying to avoid that. It wasn't our company, it was the other one, and trying to sift through that. If you have one vendor that you can deal with primarily, you can hopefully alleviate a lot of the communication, rollout, responses, not having to coordinate between two.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. Any other comments, thoughts?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Maybe just a comment and a refresher for council, and I appreciate the great work that the committee, and I appreciate the comments from Mr. Nary, and whether the council wants to head down a RFP or a license or not do scooters at all. To me, I'm, I'm supportive whatever direction the council wants to go. But, I guess I'll just remind this body that it was like a year ago that we were asked to provide a single vendor opportunity, and the council said, "No, no, we don't want to do that. We wanna, we wanna open it up. We want to provide opportunities. We didn't want to do a pilot with one company." And the piece about the license that I really appreciated is it was allowing the free market to really determine who are the best qualified vendors. It's not who won the RFP, is that when somebody operates really good, it makes the other operator that's not operating really good really have a, a spotlight shined on them. And so, I, I appreciate that process. I'm not real excited about awarding an RFP to a single vendor. I think that if we do want to head down the RFP, I think we should be awarding it to, to two at a minimum, which was kind of, again, in line with where we've said we wanted to go as a body. And I think at this late in the process, to change it from two to one, it causes me pause. And so, again, I'm supportive where, where we want to go as a body, but if we do want to have scooters in Meridian, I think that we need to, right, have at least more than one so that our citizens have options, and we can really see how these companies can truly operate for what it's worth.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's inappropriate for us to limit competition. I think it's pure lunacy to eliminate competition.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I, I tend to agree with that particular aspect. I think that competition makes companies better. And when, when there's a monopoly, the, they can kind of just do whatever they want, and the, the customer service is generally not as good. So, I think, I, I, well, I have always said more than two, so, I, I think at least two. And, and I don't know if we try, start with one and then add another one, though that doesn't seem fair to, to either. But, I like that. My question for Bill, though, is can that timeline be shortened up? Is that the fastest it can be done? Because the end of May is, you know, a good two months into the season.
So, Madam Members, Councilmember Mylum, in trying to, in trying to count the time periods and looking at this in the normal RFP of, of any ones we normally do, and Mr. Watts is the one who does them, so he's kind of the expert, and nine to 12 weeks was the minimum. So, this is a little bit less than 12, a little bit more than nine. So, it's really kind of in that window of time period. But, when you look at advertisement, giving the ample time to provide it, ample time to review it, ample time to negotiate a, a contract, because what happens in the RFP process is that you will provide as part of the package what your intention is in a contract, but there still may be some negotiation that may occur during that. So, anyway, trying to build all of those timelines and trying to, again, you, everything sounds ideal, and then someone's out of town, and their lawyer lives in another state, and they have to read it. And so, the 90 days was ambitious, to be, to be honest. So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to commit to something less than that. Madam Mayor. Sorry.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I, I also add, I mean, Mr. Watts is so efficient, he's downright magical, but to then add something like this on top of his already busy workload and expect it to be done sooner, I think would probably, would at risk his great reputation and work product. So, I, I think that the timeline that's already been put out is fairly aggressive. I, like Councilmember Mylum, like, let's get it going, and how can we get them out as soon as possible? And I don't think that...
And I don't think that an RFP process is designed to be speedy, is designed to be thoughtful. Madam Mayor, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
And just something else for counsel to consider, and not for tonight, but for the future, and as we've been going through this process, I've been wondering is, should Meridian even be in the scooter business? Is that even a role that we need to have? Is it more appropriate for our local transit authority to be the one that's operating this program? In my mind, almost to the Parks Commission's comments earlier about looking at our pathways as a region, I think when we look at transit like scooters, we need to be looking at it as a region. It's quite possible the city of Boise in another couple of months could have three different scooter programs, and if we move forward with an RFP with a single source, we would have one, and they could all be different scooter companies. Well, I don't think that's good forethought for a region. And so, while I think that we can move forward on our path, whatever it is for now, I would hope that we as a body, maybe the Transportation Commission, Planning Department, could look at maybe navigating towards a more regional model that has VRT or somebody else that looks at this. We're not, the city of Meridian isn't going to be generating any revenue from scooter programs. In fact, our dollars are designed to offset the costs that were going to occur or incur from this program, and I'd rather have those costs better absorbed by an agency that is focused on transit, maybe more in line with what they're designed to do, regardless of what some individuals might think of the agency.
I think that the problem that poses is the VRT doesn't have enforcement capabilities, and that is where the city does come in with the public right-of-ways, the sidewalks, parking on public property, and those kind of things. And I think in many regards, ACHD has brought that up on a couple of different issues of why our collaboration with them is so essential, because we are the enforcement piece to that. So, I think that is why it kind of fell under the umbrella of the city.
And Madam Mayor, I don't disagree, except for that I think that we could have one agency manage it, and we could still handle the enforcement of our end through our own local ordinances. Again, that is within our purview for what it's worth.
Okay. Other, Mr. Board.
So, I was just going to interject, it's somewhat, I don't disagree with either of you. It's like an eight-year-old worrying about where he's going to go to college. I have no idea. We'll see, you know, see how this thing goes one bite at a time. Mr. Neri, if a motion was made to follow the RFP path, a 90-day window, would it be possible to, or preferable to have two vendors would be selected through that process, or structure it so up to two vendors to ensure that they still have to meet the elements of the RFP?
Madam Members of the Council, I mean, either one. I mean, the secondary option that the committee did discuss was an RFP with two vendors. And again, ideally, one gets hopefully what all of you collectively want, but having two is certainly not a deal killer or a detriment. I mean, it certainly could be done. So, that certainly is an option, that's not a concern.
Madam Mayor. But to the question of, is it phrased an RFP for up to two vendors, or two vendors will be picked?
I would suggest this word, "up to two," because what we would do is set a criteria with sort of a high score, and what you didn't want, I mean, not to sound, trying to make it simple, but you wouldn't want one vendor scores 90 and number two scores 50, and we're opted to pick two.
All five vendors. I like that. Money.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
I'm going to make a motion.
We still have an open public hearing. Was it to close the public hearing?
No, I was going to move, really to see if there's anyone here who would like to.
Great motion. Nice job with that.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Well, if you'll just allow me to ask, it won't take a motion.
Certainly.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? A gentleman in the back? I didn't know, Mr. Board, and you were getting so formal these days. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Sangenberger, and I live in Boise. I just want to add some comments. I realize that I'm not a resident of Meridian.
We accept all testimony. Thank you.
Okay. I'm involved in the scooters from the Charger point of view, and watching the companies as they interact with each other and with the customers, I feel that you definitely want to have the companies competing with each other. If you don't have that competition, they have no incentive to improve what they're Boise will have a third scooter company, I think that was mentioned here. There was actually a press release they were going to launch this week, but the weather may have, or maybe there was some legal loophole, I don't know, that's beside the point. But yeah, they're coming. The third company will be there. But I follow what these companies have been doing, not just the ones operating here, but other companies that we haven't even seen in Idaho, in other states, and there are communities where there's almost no licensing, and you get every little mom-and-pop scooter operation opening up that can, if they can figure out how to do it. And you've got the ones that are very strict on the regulations, and the biggest complaints are coming out of the cities that are so restrictive, the customers can't find a scooter. There aren't enough scooters in those towns. The city of San Francisco has limited each of their licensees to 250 scooters. That's the same number Boise's been operating on. San Francisco's huge. People can't find them. They're not getting utilized by the people who need them as a transportation alternative. I'm not saying to open up the number here to be a big, huge number. Meridian's is obviously smaller than Boise, smaller than San Francisco, or any of the big cities that I'm talking about, but if there isn't a high enough density of scooters, then the project's going to fail in the sense of not meeting the needs of people as a transportation alternative. It'll just be a recreational thing. It'll be something, oh, there's a scooter, let's go for a ride. It's not going to be, I can count on parking here where there's plenty of parking and riding to work every day because there's no guarantee of a scooter. And then the other thing you need to consider, I believe, is what to do when scooters, if they're not licensed in your jurisdiction, end up here, because it's going to happen. If you license two companies and somebody rides one from Boise out here, or brings one in a car out here and then rides it and then leaves it, how do you address that? It's something I think Boise is overlooking too, because you could license a company they don't have there, or maybe Garden City well down the road, or one of the other towns around here. And hopefully eventually everybody can be on the same track as to how to deal with those kinds of situations. But it should just be something that's considered, not necessarily today, not necessarily in your first ordinance, but to have it in mind that eventually you'll want to write something in that addresses how to deal with those things.
Thank you, Sean.
Just one more, real quick thing.
Okay. If you'll keep it quick, your three minutes is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Many of the people who charge scooters as a contractor are economically disadvantaged. They do this in their homes. In some communities, it's come up that neighbors start complaining that they're not licensed to do this. Might be something to look at is deciding how you want to deal with that issue. Personally, I don't think it should require a license, but that should be in the code.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Erin Kendall, Idaho Operations Manager for LIME at 2230 South Col row in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
I just want to say, to start out, that I couldn't agree more. I think competition is the right way to go. I think for those of us that want to stick around and be successful, it'll bring out the best in us. So, I think having more than one vendor or provider in this process will be ultimately a win for the city of Meridian. We also want to acknowledge that we do support the process to implement an RFP and to select the vendor or vendors most capable of collaborating with the entirety of the Meridian community. We acknowledge the importance of a well-managed rollout of this program in partnership with the city. To that end, we've already conducted outreach to local businesses as well as law enforcement. We've reached out to the Village of Meridian as well as Lindsay and the Meridian Downtown Business Association. We actually met with Lindsay earlier today to discuss some of her and her team members' concerns, and that went really well. We have also sat down with local law enforcement to talk about education and outreach opportunities via their social platforms, as well as doing some onsite education events with the officers themselves, so we're looking forward to that. We hope to have future meetings scheduled with the city clerk's office, local chamber members, as well as SNC, Blue Cross, and more, as those are in the works as we speak. Whatever company is selected in the RFP process will be most equipped to serve the city if they have strong collaborative relationships with local businesses, civic leaders and staff. We hope that the council will pass this legislation soon and help our fast-growing city be even more prepared for the growth that is occurring all around us. We thank you for your time and your commitment to getting this done on behalf of the citizens of Meridian. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions? Thank you. Is there any other testimony? We have a couple of committee members. Any additional comment from Robert or Chief? Mr. Board.
Madam Mayor. I would move that we close the public hearing on ordinance 19-1809.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing on item 9E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
I would, I'm moving that.
You're moving.
You're moving?
Mr. Palmer. I hereby move that we utilize an RFP process as laid out and recommended unanimously by the committee for the selection of up to two vendors, for that process to be completed within the proposed 90-day window from today, for a selection within those 90 days, and that the ordinance 19-1809 be tabled for now, perhaps probably brought back maybe at the April workshop, as it gets amended to account for this RFP process.
I have a motion in a second to move forward with the recommendation from the committee on the RFP process and following the timeline described within, and to table the ordinance 19-1809 till April. Any discussion?
Sorry. Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Neri.
The motion was 90 days from today. If you look at the memo, it's 90 days from day one, and day one is finalizing the RFP specification and criteria, and I don't know that we have all of that today. I don't, Mr. Watts felt that could be done within approximately a week. So, I think we can do it fairly quickly, but I'm concerned if it's 90 days from today and we don't have that finalized, we won't have an issue in RFP in 14 days.
Was it 97 days?
97 days would probably be better. As soon as it's finalized, I anticipate it a week, so.
Madam Mayor, the motion maker isn't set on 90 days. I think the intent is known that about 90 days.
Okay.
There may be an opportunity to compress some timeframe in the response window, but nonetheless, to get it done. And Madam Mayor, for brief discussion on it, I think the discussion amongst this council and some of the pivoting is going to lead to a better product, and it's, Councilwoman Mylum said it very succinctly and well, when I watched the video of trying to do it right versus doing it right now. So, I give credit to the ability to pause and reflect and try and do it right, and to listen to the wise counsel of the committee and the good work of Ms. Kane, in particular, to try and set this up in a way that'll be most successful. Comments here today support that. I know our law enforcement has supported it, and the public isn't necessarily, from the information we've gathered through surveys, knocking down the door to try and have this implemented yesterday. So, we get the impression that the public is supportive of what we're doing now, too. So, I think come Memorial Weekend, we'll all be pleased having gone down this path. So, I appreciate everyone's flexibility to try and do it right.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Am I the only one whose door is being knocked down? After every single, actually, every Wednesday morning, I get half a dozen texts, usually from different people, saying, "Did you get it done last night? Are scooters coming back?"
It's the age.
Well, you have the opportunity tonight to get it done and start moving up forward.
Madam Mayor, and to explain why I'm going to vote no, I can't bring myself to vote to move forward regulation on a business like this. So, while I'm going to participate in trying to make sure that we pick the right ones, but when we get to that point, I can't support the regulation of this industry.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Board.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 8 or 9F, would that be continued to April as well? Okay. I would need a motion to continue this resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
I move that we continue Resolution 19-2128 to the workshop April 9th.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to continue item 9F to April 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All ayes. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, to the previous motion that was, the ordinance itself was being continued, we said April. Do we need to say April 9th as well, at least so we have an agenda date that it will be checked in on?
Madam Members of the council, I guess, I apologize if I missed the April 9th. I didn't hear April. So, the ordinance itself will be different, because it does require an ordinance for a franchise, but it may be different than the existing ordinance. So, you really can just simply table it, because we would renotice it, we'd put it back. Same thing with the resolution. If in the processing of the RFP, this fee would be different, and therefore you could withdraw this resolution, and we will bring another one when related to the RFP. So, we can actually withdraw both of them at this point.
Okay. Well, we were just kidding on the motion before.
Take it back.
I guess, so counsel, to back up, the Resolution 19-1809 and Resolution 19-2128, if I could have a motion to table those.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
Move to table both the ordinance 19-1809 and Resolution 19-2128.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to table both items under 9E and F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Okay. Item 10A was withdrawn from our agenda, so I'll move to item 10B. That is under our Community Development Department.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Madam Mayor, Members of the council, I'm here today to give you an update on the sidewalk projects that we have funded with MDC right now. Right now, we have two projects open. One is the Carlton Project, and one is East Third. The Carlton Project, it was funded initially in PY16 for the design, and then the construction wasn't funded until... wasn't funded until 17. And then this current year, we funded the East Third project. With the current construction market, they've been having a hard time getting bids for the first project to get going with it, so we've been working with them to figure out how we want to move forward. One of the biggest things is that we wanted to make sure we maintain the integrity of the program, which first and foremost is responsibility to citizens to provide funding and effective project management for viable projects that will enhance the community. We also have a commitment to provide accessibility to these neighborhoods, and so we want to make sure that the projects are moving forward and not at a standstill. And also, we want to provide transparency to the public. HUD does have a few spending requirements. One of them is that the projects have to be complete, start to finish, within seven years. We also have 270 days that we have to have some sort of expenditure every 270 days, or we have to come up with a remediation plan, and it's not always guaranteed that those remediation plans will be approved by HUD, so we could get into a little bit more trouble there, too. And we also have some timeliness regulations that we have to adhere to, to make sure that we're spending our money and showing that our community needs it. So the first project that I was talking about, the Carlton project, it's, it's really about accessibility to this neighborhood. The orange is where the sidewalk would go. It's about improving connectivity and increasing safety for students. If you keep going west where that orange is, the first school you hit is Coal Valley, and then it continues on to Meridian Elementary. So where, where we're, well, where MDC is proposing this sidewalk, then there's, there's not safe walking paths, and so we feel it's really important to continue this for the LMI area, the Low to Middle Income area, because that's the purpose of this grant. They have spent $65,000 so far on design and bids and all of that, and they have a balance of $176,000. It's been out for bid three times. The most recent one was, I think it ended in February, and they put it out in an off-season hoping that they would get lower bids, but it was still double the amount of what they have available. Second project that is open right now is geared toward eliminating blight, and it's a step toward the planned public parking area. It's just this little strip that's kind of a mess over there, but it's between Broadway and the railroad tracks on East Third, and it is not residential, as you can see. They have kind of put this on hold until we can figure out the first project, but there's a balance of $180,000 on this one. So we've been working with MDC to try to figure out all the different solutions that we could come up with, and not all of them are good solutions, but we wanted to put them all out there anyway. So again, we're going to the MDC Board tomorrow to give them the proposed solutions, and we do have a preferred one that I'll get to. The first potential solution would be to wait up to a year to bid the Carlton project again, and if, if this happens, then MDC could move forward with the East Third project and see if they run into the same issues, or if they can get a bid that's within what they had originally budgeted for. The pro for this would be that construction costs may be less in the future, but it could also flip and be more expensive in the future, which would be the con. We would also have less time to complete the project, so we could run into some time issues there, and as far as unspent funds, we could also run into timeliness issues on that. We would definitely have a remediation plan required the whole time, which is a red flag for HUD, and it may make it so that we end up getting monitored again this coming year. The next potential solution would be to pay back the cost of the design so that we have no more head funds in it, and reallocate the construction funds to a different project. The pros to this, the design's complete and we have it in hand. We could wait to do the bidding until the market is better for, well, in our, in our favor, I guess. And also, ACHD may be willing to participate if they don't have to worry about any federal requirements. The con, who's going to pay back the money? The project wouldn't be constructed, and so we wouldn't be providing that for our citizens, and we would have no idea when it would be constructed. And the East Third project could run into the exact same issue. The third solution would be to make up the difference in the construction budget and use local funds to do that. The pro, project complete, no timeliness concerns, and no remediation plan. The bad thing is that it may not be worth the amount we spent on it, and we're not sure where the $180 would come from on this. So the final solution is the preferred solution. This would be to reallocate the East Third project funds to the Carlton project, so the project would be complete. We wouldn't have the timeliness concerns, no remediation plan, and MDC would have to reapply for the East Third project, and they would be able to look and see if the contingencies that they had originally built in would be appropriate, or if they needed to change the amount that they requested. So the con to this would be that there would be a substantial amendment, so it would take a lot more work, and we would have to come back here again. The project may not be worth the amount we spend on it, and the action plan goals would not be met for the current year. And also, MDC may not get funded again for this project. It's not guaranteed that they would get that money again. So, yeah, so that was the preferred solution. So what that would look like if we move forward with that, February, we spent working with MDC, making sure that we're all on the same page and figuring out how to move forward. In March, we would ask MDC to award the construction bid that they have. MDC would provide us with an updated timeline so that we can make sure that it was on track, and I would start working on the substantial amendment and have it to you guys to open for public comment by the end of March. After the substantial amendment goes through, then we would cancel the subrecipient agreement for the East Third Street project and amend the Carlton project to move that money over. MDC would complete the regular monthly progress reports so that we can make sure it stays on track, and then we would just keep monitoring it until it was done, but they're not expecting it to take very long once they can actually get going on it. So we're not, we're not necessarily asking you guys to do anything, but we did want to make sure that everybody was aware of the direction we were going, and if you guys had any concerns, you could let us know.
Thank you, Crystal. Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Crystal, can you show us the map again of the one that they're wanting to switch to? Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Crystal, I guess I have a question in terms of, in talking with Ashley, will the bids still be good?
Yeah, we have really recent bids, so it's, I don't think they're even a month old yet, so we'll be fine on these ones.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Crystal, do you know offhand a ballpark of how much CDBG funds have went to MDC over the past 10 years?
I don't. I can get back to you on that, but I'm not sure what it is right now.
Yes, Madam Mayor, my, my point is recognizing that MDC may not, there's no guarantee they'd be a future recipient. I think that they have been recipients for many projects over the past years, and it seems to be a good working relationship, so I don't think it disqualifies them in any way from applying for funds in the future, for what it's worth.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, they have tried really hard to spend this funding. They, they have been looking everywhere they can to find people to try to get them bid for these. It really does seem like it's out of their control. It's, the construction costs have just increased so drastically over the last couple of years. And again, we originally only funded them in PY16 for design, so they didn't even have money to build it when they first got the bid, or, I'm sorry, when they first constructed it.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that to council's attention. If you could send out an email tomorrow after you present to the MDC Board with the recommended approval to how they want to move forward. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 10C is also under Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the next item is something we talk about on an annual basis. On December 27th, the city received a letter from, from the Ada County Highway District notifying us that they were going to begin their process to start developing a new integrated five-year work plan for the years 2020 to 2024, excuse me. And as part of that, they, they usually extend an invite for us to send our top priorities to them for consideration in that programming process. I did discuss with the Meridian Transportation Commission on February 4th, so earlier this month, roadways and intersection projects. We ran out of time and didn't make it to community programs projects, but knowing that sometimes we can get bogged down a little bit in some of the discussions, I wanted to bring to you at least part of their recommendation for priorities for 2019, that being the roadways and intersections. And I'll be back at a future meeting next, after their meeting in March, with the community programs requests to forward on. ACHD has given us a deadline that they want our priority list by March 15. So that's why, again, I wanted to get at least part of this done as soon as possible, and then we'll talk about community programs projects at a future date. So I did, in your packet, you do have some tools that both the Highway District use and our Transportation Commission use. You don't have to use them, but they're, they're at your disposal should you want to look at level of service, or how the return on investment or cost benefit looks for these projects through ACHD's programming process. So you do have those in your packet. I didn't burn any hard copies, but I can, real quick, if someone wants an 11 by 17, I can make some printouts. And then you also have the list of the draft priorities that the Transportation Commission recommended. So I can pull up the, the table. I thought I would, real quick, and excuse me as I switch to the other monitor here. So I'll pull up the, I'll have at our disposal the... Staff left, let's see. Not seem to be working. Staff left is not... Left monitor? Oh, it's just not here, sorry. It is on the screen, just not on my other screen. Sorry about that. So this is a, an interactive map that Brian, Brian McClure in my office put together. You have in your packet essentially the same map, it just has a little bit different scaling. The cool thing about this is we can pick a project, put on it, and you can see the, historically, the rankings of it. So there's, there's some legacy component to this, and shows you what is recommended this year, what it was last year, and the few years prior to that. So this is pretty cool. We'll continue to build on and expand this over time, and even maybe have some more information that'll pop up, maybe, you know, extent of the scope, any issues that may, you know, pop up, kind of almost like the spreadsheet almost in, in this pop-up window. So I thought we could use this, though, tonight and kind of look at that list. Again, I have the actual spreadsheet, too, if you want to go through them. Probably the biggest, there are really two changes. So we don't, I don't ask the Transportation Commission to reinvent the wheel every year. We use essentially what was 2018's list. Staff proposes some changes to them, and then they make it their own, and what you have before you is, is again, their recommendation. Probably the biggest change from what staff recommended to them and what they're now recommending to you is the Lynder Road Overpass. So staff had that as recommended priority number one, and that was a jump in like 18 or 19 spots, something like that. It was top 20, but it was hovering right around there. And staff made it number one, and they moved it down to number five, so still a top-five project. And then the McMillan corridor was talked about as well. So they moved a couple of projects that had slipped down on McMillan, saying, "Hey, we've made some progress on McMillan. Seems like we're stepping back now, you know, they're starting to creep into the top 10, top 15, and now we're pushing them back down to the, the top 17, 18." So good discussion, but that's essentially the changes that they ma, made year over. You can see those, so the first two columns on that spreadsheet shows you the proposed recommendation for, for 2019, and then last year, 2018, is the, the next column in on the right. And again, you have other information there, if it's in ACHD's programming, what year it's planned for construction, if it's even in the program or not. So I know you guys have all seen this before, so I'm sorry if I'm kind of doing a high-level broad-brush overview of this. I'm happy to go into more details if you'd like. But again, staff would stand for any questions, or really, it's a dialogue, and what I request tonight is that we discuss, and if possible, finalize the priority list for roadways and intersections. Typically, we put together a cover letter as well. I started that. I figured the one we would probably highlight this year is Lynder Road Overpass, but again, there's some dialogue there. I don't quite know the messaging there, don't really have any details of what, if any details, we want to add to that letter or not, or if it's kind of the same thing from the joint meeting and, and past meetings, that, hey, we'd love to partner with you on this, or if, or if there's some trading. One of the things that we've kind of talked about a little bit, I've talked about with others about, I should say, is potentially trading out. If, if we really think that the Lynder Road Overpass is such a high priority project, are we willing to give another project or two up and say, hey, we're willing to delay these at essentially the same cost to advance this one and take its place in the programming? So just a thought that, that there could be some of that, too, so if you want to look at something that, that's out there, you know. And realistically, this thing isn't, Lynder Road Overpass, isn't going to be constructed next year. It's going to take some effort, but if you look at a 2022, 2023, 2024 project or two, and said, you know what, we think they're all important, but maybe why don't you switch this plant, this project you're planning on doing in 2023, and, and, and trade that out for a similar project, i.e. Lynder Road Overpass? That could be something that, that is part of the, the narrative that goes along with our, our priority list, so. Anyways, I'll pause and stand for any questions, and I'll pull up the spreadsheet, too.
Ms. Mylum?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have the spreadsheet open, Caleb, but I looked at it earlier, and I, I had some issues, and obviously, I don't drive everywhere in the city, so I don't necessarily know firsthand what the traffic is like at every, on every road and every intersection, but, so I have most, most of the experience I have is near where I travel and where I live. And, and also, it seems to be a lot of the same complaints that we have had here in testimony in the same air, same areas. And it's funny that you pointed at 16, because that's one of the issues I have, so 16, 11, and 12. They have, I think they, I think they're all F, and we have some Es that are higher priorities than these. 11 and 12, what you have there is Safe Rafts of Schools, and so many kids are walking and riding their bikes from 16, 11, and 12 over to Heritage Middle School. And, and the, anyway, so I, I would like to see those as a higher priority. And they're Fs when we have Es that are higher up on our priority list.
And Madam Mayor, just a little bit on, on that, and McMillan in particular. So McMillan is going to be a constrained corridor. So widening that out to five lanes, McMillan will probably be at level of service F for some time, just because you've got the Lemp Canal and you've got those big power poles. And so the cost benefit of widening that, and so ACHD's made the decision to not relocate the canal or underground it because it's such a large facility, and those power poles are expensive to relocate. So it's, it's a constrained corridor. So this is just going to be something that, it can be widened, but it can only be widened to three lanes. No, the sidewalks and Safe Rafts of Schools is a different issue, but just, I just wanted to address the level of service concern there that potentially McMillan, particularly in the peak hour, and I should just, I want to just make that clear. This isn't a 24-hour failing thing. They look at it basically in the PM commuting peak hour, which you get, most of the people are using it during those times, but that is when they, they take that temperature gauge, if you will, of how a roadway is performing with capacity. So anyways, I just wanted to quickly make that point about McMillan in particular, because it's only planned to be a three-lane roadway.
But Madam Mayor, and just, I guess to add to that, part of my, where I was coming from, too, is there's still tons of apartments that are under construction right now that within the next year will be built, and it's, yeah, it's gotten really bad. I'm going to move.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Couple of comments. Caleb, first off, I think this, breaking it up is almost a happy accident. I think it's good for the commission that we kind of do split them up over two meetings. From a council member perspective, splitting these out over a couple of meetings, to me, makes it a lot easier to keep my focus on a lot of the meatier questions that are before. So again, in coordinating with the future, I guess that would be a recommendation for me, is split them up if, if possible. As it pertains to the, the priority projects, I, I'm one that, for the most part, support the recommendations of the commission with, with just one notable change. I appreciated staff placing the Lynder Road Overpass as number one. I also appreciate the feedback that came from the commission, so for me, I guess I would recommend that we move item number five to item number... So for me, I guess I would recommend that we move item number five to item number two in light, because there was a lot of discussion about project that's listed number one remaining as number one, and then just letting everything else trickle down. So that would be the only recommended change for me. And I think that's in part of our conversations with the Highway District about Linder Road. I think we can have at either now or at a later point in time, a conversation about what we'd want to include in that letter to the Highway District about Linder Road. And I think that's a bigger conversation for the Council about what we want to convey to them outside of that meeting. But I think keeping it at near the number-one priority, I think falls in line with many of the conversations we've had with Highway District Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh. Caleb, this is due back to the Commission or ACHD next Wednesday?
March 15.
Oh, okay. So if you want to kind of split this up, have the original discussion tonight and follow-up next week, we can certainly do that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Maybe a question for Caleb. Caleb, I assume you'll present the other part to the Transportation Commission in our meeting in March, and then a subsequent follow-up agenda item for the City Council after that. Is that the plan?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, so their next meeting is Monday. I wasn't planning on coming the next day because I wasn't quite sure what I would hear, and I would need it in the packet for the Clerk before that meeting. So I was planning on your next workshop in March, which, again, doesn't leave a whole lot of time. But what I can do is put the draft cover letter in your packet, and then we can look at it on March...
11th?
12th, yeah, whatever, 11th?
12th.
That was kind of my plan, but I can, we can...
So, Madam Mayor, perhaps what I'd suggest, with your permission, is that, again, if there's any other comments about this piece tonight, we can talk about that. We can talk about the other projects in our March workshop, with then a final recommendation that we would present to ACHD with a letter. I assume that'd be signed by the Mayor?
Typically, yes.
Okay. I don't know how we're looking at our March workshop, but to me, that seems the most appropriate place to wrap this up.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
That makes sense. I think historically, the changes, if any, are relatively minor. The letter's structured, we're not moving mountains that late in the game anyway, so we should be able to do that.
The workshop looks good.
And Madam Mayor, maybe then, I guess, a question for either you or Caleb or somebody. Do we need to have a conversation between now and our workshop about a planned formal commitment from the city as it pertains to the Linder Road Overpass? Whether that is a monetary amount or a plan in place?
I think Director Wong had mentioned that they would first like to approach ITD and get a sense for what their thoughts were. I believe that's kind of the next step that was discussed at the Commission meeting.
Madam Mayor, if I can just follow up on that. Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. There's just, there's an opportunity. So if you wanted to, you could potentially include it in that letter, but no, it's not, it's not necessary.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Are you still...
Nope, it's okay. I've been talking a lot tonight.
So I guess maybe, maybe you could just give me some, some history on like six and seven, why they are a higher priority than, and their level of service is E than other ones that are further down the list that are Fs? Why aren't those being moved down?
Oh, bless you. Madam Mayor, Councilman Milam, you know, I don't know that I can explain the whole history on that. I know Fairview and Locust Grove historically has been higher. I mean, we go to the map that Brian created and kind of see, it was, and it's still pretty high, and you do have an opportunity to move them down. And that's why it did move down a little bit, is because the level, it's now only level of service E where it was level of service F. I don't think it's improved, so I don't know exactly what happened there. Just anecdotally, if you drive through that intersection at 5 o'clock, good luck. So as an example for number six. But we did move it down because that's what the level of service map showed, was it moved to E. Now, why it didn't move down further, I don't know, but it moved up on the list historically because it's, it's becoming more and more congested.
Actually, six, now that I'm thinking about it, I believe has a, is one of our higher accident intersections. So that, for that reason, I think makes sense. It's just hard to see, you know, LOS Es higher up on the list when there's so many Fs below.
Well, and I think that there's more than the service level that's put into the ranking. And, and there's extensive discussion about these different projects as they're ranking them and considering where they should be at, so...
Madam Mayor, to your point, I, sorry, I just moved to, again, the ACHD prioritization table. I mean, if you look at that, it does have information on congestion and safety. So if you wanted to look at the crashes and the cost of crashes, that factors in. I don't know if I can find it real quick. It should be somewhere hovering, I guess, in the top here, Fairview, Locust Grove. There it is, number 12. So if you went across, the annual safety benefit, they anticipate is about $330,000. So you can compare that. And yeah, looking at some of those other numbers up here, that's one of the higher ones. I can't sort this because it's just a PDF, but it does look like, as far as a safety benefit, this project scores very high. So to your point, yeah, that, it's not just about level of service. It's, congestion's part of it, volume to capacity ratio's part of it, safety and other considerations. So it's a good point, the safety, for sure.
But I think, Council, if there are certain questions you have on corridors, you want to hear more detail on some of the considerations that were put into that. I think that's definitely something that is worth discussing, and identifying what those particular projects are and how they were ranked, if you have further questions about that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Maybe an additional question for Caleb. Caleb, I've heard kind of Councilmember Milam saying, hey, what about this particular spot, and maybe I'd like to see some movement there. I've obviously referenced kind of my comments about movement. How do you want us to structure that so that you can follow all of the bouncing balls about where council members maybe want to see movement go? Recognizing that we're not formalizing anything tonight, we're not doing that until likely our workshop meeting.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, just in the motion, to be pretty specific about that, I mean, you were pretty specific in yours. Councilman Milam wasn't as specific about moving, you know, I need a, you know, five to two. Okay, I get that. And then everything cascades down from that. If it's six and seven are moving down further, or tell me where to put them, because I'm not a mind reader. And I want everybody to be clear, when the motion is made, what our priority list looks like. If it's something for next year's consideration, you know, that's fair, too. Let me know, hey, just for the future, will you consider more safety than, and level of service, or those types of things, and I can relay that to the Commission. So I guess just as much specificity as you're able to provide in a motion certainly helped me. And again, I'm not afraid to wave my hand and go, I don't understand where we're moving things. And sometimes you move something to two, and now someone wants to move something to two, well, is that two B or two A? You know, so just, that's happened in the past. So far, I'm not concerned about that. I'm tracking pretty well, but when it comes to making that motion, again, just clear.
Please. Madam Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Back to the conversation about ACHD engaging ITD. Do we have any of our staff that are involved in that conversation, or are we essentially waiting for ACHD to get back to us?
I talked to Director Wong afterwards, and I was under the impression, we're setting up the date with Nampa, and we've already started collaborating on dates for that. I have not heard from Director Wong on this particular one with the overpass and getting together, unless, Caleb, you have?
Madam Mayor, I don't have an update since, since last week. Compass, we've been primarily using Compass as the facilitator of those meetings, and I think that's the right approach. So I think here in the next couple of days, we'll circle back with Mount Stahl and some of his staff and see if maybe they can organize another meeting. I've been part of two meetings with them so far at the staff level. So I don't know what engagement looks like kind of past that.
Madam Mayor, the only reason why I'm asked is, is I agree with Caleb that this letter is a great time for us to really, really be direct about, this is the commitment from the city, recognizing we need some answers first before we can start to begin that process. So how we can bird-dog the state to give us the answers that we need to know so we can move forward would be ideal.
And I think that Justin was getting his Commission the information that we received from Compass. I think they still needed to talk further about it as a Commission. So, Justin, is there any, anything you want to add? I don't want to speak for ACHD.
Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, for the record, Justin Lucas, representing the Ada County Highway District, business address is 3775 Adams Street in Garden City, Idaho. I think the characterization up to this point has been accurate. We just had the joint meeting last week. There had been a few staff-level meetings related to the Linder Road Overpass, and staff did not have a chance to sit with the Commission prior to your joint meeting. So that was the first time the Commission had really heard about it, which is not atypical at ACHD. In a situation like this, staff looks to the Commission for direction before we take any steps with ITD. And I think we have that direction now, and we'll continue to work with Meridian staff and Compass to talk to ITD. ITD, their decision-making process is not like ACHD's decision-making process or the city's decision-making process, so we'll do our best to get as much information as we can to bring back to you and to our Commission for consideration. But ITD's just a different animal to work with. And to this point, and I don't know how Caleb would characterize it, I personally haven't sensed a lot of enthusiasm from them. I think they're looking, they're kind of maybe playing a little, kind of, they're looking to the city or to ACHD to kind of take that first step. And to be honest, I think ACHD's kind of looking to the city to take that first step. And so, as was characterized at the meeting, ACHD can't do this project by itself. I mean, there's an ITD structure sitting, it's their freeway, it's their overpass, sitting right in the middle of what would be our partnership project. So in these situations, I think continued conversation is critical. Mayor, I think continued coordination with our Director is critical in this case, just to keep that direction kind of top-down going.
Well, we appreciate that, but I did see that certainly ACHD played a critical role in moving along the Cloverdale Overpass rebuild. So I anticipate a similar process.
Very fair.
Any further questions for Justin? So maybe we can follow up with Compass to find out when that next meeting would be, and we can certainly update City Council in the form of email, and then have an update discussion when we have this back on the workshop.
Madam Mayor.
Does that work?
Just to add, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I think, Caleb, moving forward, it would be nice to have, if we can get Amy Revis from ITD involved in these meetings, I think that would be a critical step. And also, I'll make sure to invite my boss, Dave Wallace. I think that would be important to continue the conversation moving forward.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, before we move on, I guess, just any other points? It sounds like maybe there may or may not be a discussion about a fine point or not, an opportunity to partner and what that may be dollar-wise or whatever, but any other talking points you'd like in this cover letter to get that drafted so we don't hit a snag as we approach this deadline? If you want to just email me those, hey, can you put this little snippet in the draft letter? And I could incorporate that into what I'm crafting as a cover letter to our priority lists for this year. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think in particular, we wanted to, and I'll follow up with Director Wong on that messaging piece. I think it's really critical to be able to, to talk about why this is a priority, not just the improvement to the state network, but how the local network improves the state functionality as well. And that was more of the message piece that we talked about after the meeting. So that's going to be critical, too. Anything further on this one? Under Tandee, I will turn this over to Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, kind of a brief introduction for this, is kind of a follow-up on some of the structure that we're using for council-led discussion topics and action items. This was, the Welcome Sign Program was referenced by Councilman Cavanagh at an earlier meeting as something for a future meeting topic. So kind of, the process we're trying to utilize is, following that request, the task falls back on one of the six of us who's making the request to go out, talk to staff, do the homework, research, gather data, see if, from all of that, there's some specific action that's to be requested or recommended to be taken. That's, this is utilized, that process, Councilman Cavanagh went and did a bunch of homework, talked to Caleb, gathered data documents, some of which is in the packet for us to review, then to come back on the agenda for today with a recommendation based upon that review and gathering of data, a recommendation of some type of action that this Council should take with regards to the topic. So that sort of frames what got us here, kind of using the process. I appreciate Luke's working through those steps and kind of getting us to where we are. So we've got data, we've got an engaged councilman with a recommendation, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Councilman Borton, Madam Mayor, Council. Just going to stay up here if it's all okay. So a little background on the Welcome to Meridian Sign Program and kind of my involvement. As some of you may recall, a number of years ago during the budget hearing, a couple of these signs were included in the annual budget. There was some conversation with Council at the time about, is it appropriate to be using general fund dollars to be building these signs? And that's when I started taking somewhat of an interest in this program. Fast forward to a couple of years later, was contacted by some constituents inquiring about the program, its plan, the methodology. When you look at the exhibit that's in front of us all, you'll see both current and future signs, and you'll see in many cases, future signs in fairly close proximity to each other. Again, future signs in close proximity to current signs. And I was asked by, by some stakeholders, is, tell me about the plan. And I quickly realized I didn't, I didn't know anything about the Welcome to Meridian Sign Plan. And so, which is why I brought it up as a future topic. I thought it would be good to be educated on that. I appreciate Council President Borton telling me to go, go be educated, then you can leave that discussion with Council. And so Caleb and I had a couple of conversations towards the end of last year and the beginning of this year about the program or the plan, and it's provided some good context to me for what I hope will be a good conversation amongst Council tonight. A couple of things to be aware of is that the, you'll see on the legend, you know, there's both the existing signs, sometimes what we see, the, you know, it's a steel pole with a sign, Welcome to Meridian. Many people focus on the larger monument signs that we see by CarMax. There's one by, I drive by the hotel on Eagle and Overland, and as you can see on the map, there is one in the northern part of our community. These large signs are not cheap. According to a recent quote, they're upwards of $20,000 to be, to be built and placed, and that is essentially falling, at least as of now, because the City Council isn't supportive of spending general fund dollars, which I agree with, it's falling to added development costs. And I thought it was appropriate, one, for us to look at this and say, what is our collective plan? What's in front of you is called the Welcome Plan, which is essentially, it's a map that shows where current and future signs will go. shows where current and future signs will go. It doesn't speak at all to the, the rationale or the vision, why signs, why these locations were selected, and why we think this many are necessary in, in these different locations. And so it put me in a challenging spot to report back to say, here's the plan, because I, I, I don't see one. And I'm sure that there was a goal or a vision cast when this began, but as a city that we have, seems to have plans for so many different things, you know, constrained financial plan, we're working on our comprehensive improvement plan, and we have, we have a strategic operational plan. I thought this would be at least good for us as a council to say, do, is this something that we think is a priority? Do we, as a body, agree that passing $20,000 per sign on to development, is that something that we agree with? And if so, here's the reasons why. This is, this is the reason why we think that is appropriate for our community. And so I wanted to bring that to all of you tonight for at least a conversation. I have some opinions, but I wanted to at least provide some background. And Caleb, sorry, I forgot to preclude that. If I get off-base or I'm incorrect, please feel free to interrupt and course correct, because this is obviously, you know, ran out of, out of our planning department. I will tell you that I believe we have one DA for a project that is requiring one of these, and I believe that is, Caleb, correct me if I'm wrong, is that number 23 that I see on the map?
Twenty-three or 13?
Yeah, 23.
I think it's 23.
They're so close to each other, it's, it's hard to tell. I assume it's 23. And so there, there could be some immediate actions we could take, as well as some long-term actions we could take. Or again, after this brief update, we can say, nope, this is, this is great, and we can continue on. So open up, I, I think Caleb can answer questions as best he can, and I know I can as best I can. I'm sure maybe Madam Mayor's got the longevity, might be able to speak to some of this as well.
Well, I certainly can say probably 23 was the impetus behind a monument sign program where the developer on both sides of the street, as they were improving the intersection at Eustick and Eagle Road, wanted to be, be part of a welcome type of monument. And I think that at the time that this first started discussion and probably resulted in being part of a development agreement and a requirement, was Winston Moore and David Turnbull wanted to let people know that they were arriving to the city of Meridian, and they were proud of that. I believe that when we first started discussing it, it was going to go in a medium at, as they were designing that corridor of Eagle Road. And so that goes back a number of years. And it really was the development community, as they received their entitlements, they wanted to be a part of welcoming the, the traveling public to the city of Meridian. And the monument signs became a part of that. The other signage used to be with Meridian growing at the rate it was growing. We were constantly battling with the road departments on changing out the population because it was changing so fast. And so that really changed out, then the, the metal signage. And those are to move as the, as annexation occurs and we start to, to move our, our lines. So we, we talked at one time to make it simple and just have it in our area of impact, but that didn't make sense either. So that is just a little bit of the background behind it. The council wanted to have a better idea of where these larger monument signs would be placed, and so that as development came in, they could see the, the vision as, as part of that welcoming corridor. Because we are surrounded by five cities on all sides of us, it, it was an important priority to the council at the time, and, and certainly I know those priorities can change. As far as placement goes, I, I know there's been, including mine, a number of comments on the placement by CarMax, but we couldn't justify the cost to the taxpayers or ask the business to move it once, once it changes from a five-lane road to a seven-lane road. So it was placed in future right-of-way instead of making it something that was more visible and, and current in today's world. So there's a little bit of background for what that is worth, and certainly I'd be willing to answer any questions if I can. Certainly Caleb and, and Robert have been helping to execute on much of this as, as well, and as we've tried to slowly roll out a signage plan that, that shows you are in the city of Meridian.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Did I understand you right? You said that the sign that was constructed by CarMax is in a place that it will be removed?
No, it's in a place that will not be removed.
Okay, I was like, what?
And that's why it looks a little bit out of place right now, but someday when it's a seven-lane roadway, it won't.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add a couple of, of points, and then you, you can discuss the program more. My memory isn't the best, especially when it comes to some of these, but some of the things I do remember, there, there isn't, to, to Councilman Cavanagh's point, there was definitely a thought process that, that went into why here, why the, the full-blown monument signs are where they are. But it's more of an art than a science. All section line roads are arterial roads, some of them are highways. You can see on the interstate system, some of the, the ones that are really close together on the interstate system are to catch people coming off of the freeways in both directions, north and, north and south. So that's why those ones are generally clumped together. Number 11 is, is an older sign, and it's not, doesn't look like the other ones. It's, it's the sculpture that's, that's in front of the KFC there. And that's, that, that's really the, the first one, really, and that's kind of what really started to trigger, hey, we should do something throughout the city that welcomes people on our edges, type of a thing.
They didn't want barbed wire or the expense of that.
But anyway, so that's kind of what I remember a little bit, that got this, hey, yeah, we should think about doing some of this, Chindon Estate Highway. So there are, there, they're generally along there, where you get people coming into our communities from different directions on, and I'm using the air quotes, right, major roadways. They could all be major roadways, but if you look at, that was kind of the thought process from staff that we vetted then to the council at that time to say, hey, these are the roads that we think are, are to that level of, of warranting the sign. Now, the sign wasn't $20,000 when we put this together. It, we got some cost estimates, and if memory serves, it was somewhere around 12. So it's almost doubled in cost compared to some of the ones that were, that are recently been constructed. I guess just one more thing before I, before I let you all, all talk about this. The other one that I just want to bring to your attention relatively quickly is Locust Grove in Chindon. Because there is some talk, and ACHD and, and ITD are talking about that intersection and widening the road, and so we brought this plan to their attention and say, hey, we're not necessarily saying let's construct the sign, but can we set the infrastructure up, underground water and maybe power, so we can power a future sign? And we've had the conversations with Valley Life Church, where that's supposed to go. So I just want to put that out there, that really there isn't any other plans for, for constructing any of these. Where staff is still moving forward with trying to preserve and protect and set the, any other infrastructure necessary to eventually implement this plan. This is the same point, but it's kind of a little bit different. I said I'd let you guys talk about it.
Well, Caleb, before you move off of Tan, I believe that the development that was across the street from the church also contributed half of the cost of the sign.
$1,000, right, which was almost half at that time. So yes. There are three policies at, at the comprehensive plan level. So this is not code, it's not required that development does this, but our, our policies say, when a development comes, essentially, I'm handing it, but essentially, when a project comes in that's on one of these sites, get a developer to build it. City, you should also set up a program to implement this plan. And that, there isn't really a, there's not a CIP for this, there's not a every other year build one, or every fifth year build two, or anything like that. It's, it is sort of a, I don't want to say on a whim, but it is sort of, hey, yeah, you know what, we got an opportunity here, let's look at, like when the Meridian Road Interchange is being built. We worked with ITD, hey, is there an opportunity to get a welcome sign there near Overland and Meridian while that's going on? So we kind of explore it on a case-by-case. This hasn't risen to the highest priority, but it is something that's on our radar screen. And, you know, do we do the best at it? No, because it's not the top priority, but we do try to implement the plan, although there really isn't a plan to implement the plan, so.
Madam Mayor.
That was Clarice Mudd. Yes, Mr. Borton.
To, to, to force sideboards on this discussion, the question, and it goes back to Mr. Cavanagh, in light of what's gathered, is, is there a recommendation that says the sign program in its current form should be eliminated, or the sign program should be revamped to create more structure as to who pays for it, where they're located, moving the dots around? So, and if something comes from this discussion, it's maybe one of those two paths. So that's the ask.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I appreciate President Borton kind of, kind of lining up where I was wanting to head next, which is, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to eliminate the program, but we've talked a lot as this body about leveling up in our process and departments leveling up, and I think this is just another example of how we could really level up this plan, and maybe take a new look at it where our city is today, maybe when this was first put together. Does it make sense to have two signs within, monument signs proposed within a half a mile of each other? Probably not. So maybe it's taking a look at where we want to designate signs. The other piece to me that I think we need to look at is how much monetarily we want to put on the development community to build a Welcome to Meridian sign. To, to Mr. Hood's point, you know, $5,000 was, you know, we thought was right around half when that was first requested, and now, as we heard from our Parks Commission, the cost of, or from, from CDBG presentation, construction costs are going up. Does that change our desire to want to move forward in light of a sign that costs $20,000 that maybe when this was first put together only cost eight, or maybe 10? To me, I think those are some of the sideboards that, that I would recommend. I'd also probably recommend that in light of us actually putting together a plan that articulates the vision and the value of this, that we, we place a hold on the, the current request, I think, for one to be built at either 23 or 13, whichever one that is that's on, under a DA, until we can say this makes the most sense. Because when I do the quick math, it looks like there's close to $300,000 in future signs that we're asking development to be built in Meridian. And if we're okay with that, that's what we want, that's our take it as with our vision, great, then let's do it. But I think there's some cases where, as we take a second look at this with where our growth is, that maybe all of those aren't necessary. And maybe the cost of the signs could be value-engineered to have something that still looks nice, that represents the character of our community, without coming in at such a high price tag.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So I, I think if, if any of them are going to be constructed, the, the city needs to pay for it. I think if the cost of construction right now, we shouldn't be building any right now. But here's what my preference would be, is we keep the, keep the map, keep the plan, adjust it as necessary, and when somebody wants to develop a piece of property where we would like to have a sign, that we say, hey, our plan calls for us liking to have a sign here, can you save us some space and work with us, so that we can eventually build one when costs are, are, make sense for the city to move forward and, and build one here? If they say, no, our plan does, just does not work for that, then we say, darn it, okay, we move on and try to find a different spot nearby to keep with the plan, again, adjusting it as necessary. I think asking the development community at any level to, to build them is, is not appropriate. And, but, so if I can't get my plan, that my next best option would be having the map and saying, okay, you want to develop this, this is where we're planning on a sign, you're going to save us space. That still would keep me up at night, and I'd have lots of heartburn, but at least we wouldn't be making them pay for it, just saving us the space to do it. But I think, yeah, we should absolutely not ask them to pay for it. I mean, even if it's a, a tin sign on a steel pole, I think if, if that's tin sign on a steel pole is going up, the city needs to pay for it.
I, I guess, does that mean we reimburse CarMax and the developer that, that installed it on the corner of Chindon and Linder? Those were part of, of DA's, and just like the one, either 13 or 23, whichever one that is. These were all willingly went in, no one was, was forced to, to say they wanted to be a part of this Welcome to Meridian signage. So I, I guess that's my question.
Madam Mayor, answer that? It seemed like you were directing it to me. I would say no. I, I think the governments have made mistakes in the past that, that I think correcting it and doing what's right going forward is the better option than, if we were to open that up, then, you know, any government mistake in the past, anyone should, would have an ability to come forward and say, well, you fixed that problem, why don't you fix my problem? I think just going forward, that it'd be a better policy to, with my plan.
Okay, so move, so getting back to framing this conversation is, it doesn't sound like there's a desire necessarily to, to throw out the signage plan, to level it into how we move forward. We do have old DA's that do require, and the other locations, those were a little bit further down the road as well before they built it. They didn't build it within a certain time period. So are we going to be looking back? And, and that was more my, my question, is these are already part of DA's, and if we consider that for one, do we consider it for everyone that had it as part of their DA's? Or are we really looking forward to, how are we going to deal with this as they come up, as new development come, occurs?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think that's a, that's a great question, and it's one that, that I had asked. I was under the impression that there is only one DA that is out there that requires a sign to be built at this point in time, which is why it's somewhat timely that we're having this conversation. So because there is only one, it could be an action of either the council to modify the DA, or the applicant to come forth and modify their DA as it pertains to that particular piece.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Melum.
I guess I have a couple of questions, maybe one for Caleb, or maybe, the pricing on the other, you know, we priced out the big, huge monument sign, which I think you based, you did your math, maybe, considering that all of these would be those huge ones, but can you, do you know the price for the small ones and the regular signs? And then the other question that goes along with that is, is there a price difference whether the city pays for it, or if somebody else pays for it? Because anything the city pays for costs about twice as much.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Especially if, if the infrastructure is, is not there. And, and that's, as development has occurred, you do get better economies because they can put in the, the light, the one that's on South Eagle Road, we put in solar, so we didn't have the huge cost of bringing power out to it. And so it, it does make sense as development occurs, that, and, and that's why, even though the 13 or 23 is one of our oldest as part of a DA, but that development is just occurring. Mr. Burnt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you get, was your question answered?
No.
Okay, good.
So, Madam Mayor, I can round numbers, I can give you some. I don't have, and like the mayor just said, the city's project there by True Hotel, that one costs more than probably another one that may be done by development because we didn't extend underground power. They went with the solar panel, which in the long run may be cheaper because you aren't paying for the power. But the panel was not, they didn't give it to us. So the CarMax, for example, though, I mean, that was one of the more, well, we only have a few. That one was more than our original cost estimate from Idaho Electric, who did the design for us and then gave us the engineer's estimate on what it would cost to bid. I will also just throw, I'm not trying to convolute it, but we actually worked with the state to have a third design that actually went wider. So I don't, I don't know how much the vertical sign is. We've not, never built one. I don't know how much that one would cost, but it would be significantly less. The engineering, the materials, it's less, substantially less. And I'm confident in that, just remembering what their cost estimates were. We actually went with a bigger one for coming off of the interstate because the state was afraid that no one would see it, because it's only approximately 11 feet at the time, and we had them do a slight change and make it 15 feet wide. We haven't built that one, but there is another design out there. To your point, your question, yes, there is some efficiencies if the private sector builds these. You know, I can't give you a percentage, but typically, they can get a better price on doing something like this than the government can.
There's no, we don't know for sure. Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, thank you. In light of the fact that there are, you know, there are some existing signs, and we have some developers who have spent some money to construct these signs, I was thinking that maybe we could talk about modifying, or having the discussion to modify these development agreements to say, to the development community, to create an expectation that we expect them to pay a certain amount for these signs. But if during the construction, when they get bids, if they're, if the, if the cost to construct these signs are more, then the city would cover the balance, so that, almost create like a public-private partnership. I don't know if that's possible, but something maybe we could talk about.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavaner.
I don't know how much sausage we're going to make tonight. I really appreciate, I think, some of the comments from Councilmember Palmer and Councilmember Burnt, right? That maybe a potential solution, again, let's really put together what a plan is for these signs. Let's articulate the vision, the values of our community, something I think we do really, really well. And the ask is, if you fall within these areas, a zone, again, I don't like asking, I think we've got to require, I know we don't like that term, you've got to require that infrastructure be laid. And then, once that infrastructure's in place, it is a budgetary conversation for the city to say, do we want to use our general fund dollars to build that sign? The private business part comes in installing the infrastructure, the public side is in putting up the pretty sign. And those become budgetary conversations, just like art projects become budgetary conversations, just like baseball fields become budgetary conversations. Future councils can make that decision about, do we want to put a sign at number 10? Do we want to do signs this year at 21 and 16 and 17? The infrastructure's there, do we want to spend the money? And I think that gets to where Councilmember Palmer is, and I think it addresses Councilmember Burnt, kind of the public-private partnership, without saying, because again, let's say this plan is in place for 30 years. If we put a $5,000 or $20,000 limit, inflation's always going to impact that. 30 years from now, everybody would be disqualified. But the decision of the council to decide to spend dollars to build the signs would still remain.
Well, I think you kind of already got that in the sense of the development at, on 10, said, I don't want to bear the full brunt of it, so I'd rather pay a portion of it. And that was part of the annexation and zoning and the development agreement. So the other three, they said, we'd love to. And so they didn't put those things in place. Moving forward, I certainly think that you can look at a policy as part of the monument things and how you would propose that as we move forward. If the place that is yet to be built that's part of a DA, if that business wants to come forward and say, I know it's contemplated in the DA to install this, I would only like to pay for half of it, would the city pay for the other half? Certainly, I think that that comes back as a modification of the DA, and that's for the future council to decide. You know, right now, we're looking at, I'm trying to get back to the sideboards, that do we want to look at the policy moving forward, and how would that look? Certainly, I think that's what's being asked of council.
Madam Mayor, maybe that's where I'm missing, is what is the policy?
I think the policy is staff when a development comes in, and they're around one of these signs, they show them the map and say, this is part of our signage plan. And the applicant says, well, I want to be a part of that. Mr. Dean wasn't interested in bearing the whole brunt, and said, I'd like to pay for half of it. And so that was just a conversation that was had during the application. And as I recall, it was a discussion when the applicant was here in front of city council.
Is that formalized somewhere that we can point to, or is that just, is that just our business practice? I guess that's the part I'm trying to, I'm confused about. Is it a policy that's formalized, or is it really just the practice of staff?
I think it's just like anything else in the comprehensive plan. It's a document, it's a map, and it's something that is brought up as the applicant comes in and says, there's this, and they have a conversation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of council, and I know all of you know this, but since other folks, Mrs. Palmer and others, watch this, I want to make clear, we can't mandate people build these signs. So we can't require it as a condition of annexation. I mean, that's why, as Caleb said, it is a negotiation and discussion. Businesses have offered to pay for it because they wanted to. They've then put it in the development agreement because they've agreed to it. It's a consensual item. I would even be concerned in mandating they provide the infrastructure. Again, we negotiate that with businesses. As Caleb said, we start with, we'd like a sign there, you know, would you be interested in being a part of it? If the answer is, no thanks, could we have the space to put the sign there? Maybe so. Okay, can we put in the infrastructure for it? Okay, as long as we don't have to pay for it. So, I mean, it really is an ongoing dialogue. So I just didn't want to leave this discussion with the impression maybe to the public that we require people to do this. I mean, it is truly a dialogue that planning has on these and tries to negotiate what the best we can do. Some businesses, and I might be wrong, but my recollection is St. Luke's, for example, they were willing to give us the space on their campus to provide it, but I don't recall that they provided any other financial support to it. So it does vary greatly from, yes, you could put it here and then we're done, to we'd happy to build it, we want to be a part of it. So it's a whole gamut of that.
When I think with the St. Luke's, their development was approved long before this came into being. So they said, yes, we want to be a partner to it, but we're not going to put expense to it. We will offer a place to put it, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I don't know when it was, two years ago, or whenever we had this conversation before, was, that was the exact question that was asked, and I was trying to get clarification. And Caleb was, made it very clear that it was not optional in that meeting. It was, this will be built because this is where the plan is for it to be built, and if you want to develop here, it will be paid for by you. Is that not the case?
Well, Madam Mayor, if I can maybe clarify that, and I do remember the budget discussions, but I don't remember the exact conversations. I mean, we do have policies, and at the staff level, that's kind of our marching orders, is to talk with the development community, as Mr. Neri said, and say, hey, our plan calls for this. Good if we put that in your development agreement to do this? And we gauge that level of interest, to say, hey, we'd love to have you in Meridian, would you like to be part of Meridian? Part of that could be building this sign to welcome people to the community on your property. Or maybe it's just the easement. But that's kind of where we start, is what gauge their level of interest. As the mayor said, some developers are happy to do it. There's not so much. So it kind of, it is sort of a case by case, but that's usually where we start, is, hey, we do have a plan, and the policy's up on the screen that says, it's required, but it's not, this is the comp plan, it's a guide, we can't require them, but that's where we start.
And actually, if memory serves me, on the three, the CarMax, the one at Linder and Chindon, and the one at Eustick and Eagle, those were more elaborate than what we actually had proposed. I actually liked the CarMax one much better than ours. And it was much larger as well. But, you know, I guess it is something that starts with, this is our plan, you know, we'd love you to be a part of it, but yeah, it's not a have to.
Madam Mayor.
And then it becomes a DA development agreement, yes.
Madam Mayor, I think then, kind of your point to try and keep us focused at the task at hand, I guess the question for council is, is there opposition about moving forward with developing a true plan? Again, recognize that the details are yet to be defined about what this council wants. But I guess the first question is, do we want to keep the status quo? And I'm not seeing anybody saying, nope, how we have it now is how we want it to be.
Sorry, sorry. I haven't had an opportunity to talk, so I was just kind of waiting. After hearing this discussion and acknowledging that we are not forcing anybody to pay, I don't see, I don't have a problem with asking a developer if they're willing to pay for a sign or part of a sign. They might really want one there, they might be excited about it, they might say, no, I'm not willing to do that, but I'll give you the land, or I don't want your sign anywhere near my property. But I have no problem having that discussion with a developer. I think it should be had. If you don't have, if you don't have the discussion with them, they don't even know it's an option. So I don't see any problem with the way that we're doing it. If we're not forcing anybody to pay anything, I think it's, it looks like a great program. To Caleb, to Luke's point about the map being better, I think maybe some lines off to the sides on why there's two real close, and it could be a good, based on the clump of this map, there's probably a really good reason. Like this one is on this road facing this direction, and you wouldn't even see it if you're coming into town from on this other road, and that's why it looks like they're really close together. But they make sense because they're on arterial roadways, or state highways, or whatever. So it looks like a lot of thought went into this, and I don't have a problem with it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I agree with Councilwoman Milam. It seems like a lot of thought has gone into this, and I guess I'm kind of at the point of, I don't see that it's broken. So what would we be fixing?
Madam Mayor.
Working for me.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Here's why it's broken. I haven't talked to a single person who has been interested in developing a piece of property where these signs are that thinks it's optional. The words that have been used are, we'll cooperate. Because in the grand scheme of things, it's, to get something approved in this city is dang near impossible. So if it means putting up a sign to get it done, they're willing to put up with our crap to do it. But they don't want to. And I mean, sure, maybe some were super happy and willing to do it in the past, but I haven't talked to anybody who's in the line of fire who says, yeah, yeah, we want to do that. It's, we'll do it if we have to. Literally, quote, we'll cooperate.
I don't want to get into a rabbit trail, but I, these are all old ones, and there's nothing new where these monument signs that have come in that we haven't had that conversation that I know of for a number of years. So I, but I guess, Mr. Borton, do you have a comment? I'm just looking, where does this conversation end? We now have opinions stated, what is the direction of council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I'll tell you, what I've heard, I think collectively, which makes sense to me, is that the current program, consistent with the comprehensive plan, in 2.01, 1.03, it's in the packet, cites those, that commitment to a welcome to Meridian sign plan, continue to go forward. Nothing's changed, nothing's looked back. But what Councilman Kavaner has uncovered is the vacuum of articulating those metrics for consistent implementation of the plan. It's not in code, it's not an ordinance, necessarily a requirement, but it would probably be helpful to have three or four pages that would articulate metrics for the design, location, funding, and implementation of this plan that we could adopt. I don't even know if it's a formal adoption, but it might be something that would provide reference for all of us and the next seven of all of us on how this program should be utilized over the next 30 years as our city grows. That's what I heard. It sounds like that's what Councilman Kavaner's asking for. It's not an elimination of welcome signs as a program, but let's articulate in writing some of those components, design, location, funding, and implementation. We would then utilize that structure each year as part of the budget process. Each application can still be encouraged to participate in the program in the manner they already have been, understanding it's through the comprehensive plan, and our intention to have these new participants in our community participate in this program as well, if they so choose. So that might be the takeaway. And I don't know if that's a motion that makes sense to say, let's continue with our plan, and let's create that document which sets forth those four elements, so we all know exactly which direction we're rowing and why, which I support. I think the program's great. I think the trade-offs, the pros are much greater than the cons. And part of that structure would also be what type of review, you know, the map, if there's location changes and tweaks in light of development that might necessitate moving a sign, you know, here or there on this map, then that process would help all of us understand how to make those changes. That's where I would leave it. That's a long answer to your question, but I see that as some sort of action that could happen in this discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I almost started to applause.
I thought you were weeping.
I about started, I about gave President Borton a standing ovation.
Okay, well, we'll review the minutes and figure out what Mr. Borton said, and try and bring something back, and see if we actually captured it.
That structure, what could be a motion, is kind of a question also to the origin of this discussion, Councilman Kavaner, who kind of brought up and identified this problem, if that's consistent with what you're looking to come out of this.
But I guess what Mr. Neri said is, we can't have a policy, you know, you can't force it. So I'm not sure what you're looking for in terms of bringing back a policy, so.
Well, I guess it came from, everyone's talking, because we're not looking at a document that states.
Okay, we'll bring you something.
Which would need to be made, which doesn't yet exist, which is kind of where I'm getting at.
But it does exist. There are design criteria. There are design criteria, there, there is a plan, um, and I think Mr. Cavanagh had a lot of that in our, our packet.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I guess I just would say, as someone who's been working on this, I, I, I would not categorize what we have as a plan, what it's worth. I think that we have three documents that have been provided to me, that's been provided to the council, but if a member of the public asked for the welcome to Meridian sign plan, I wouldn't feel real comfortable just saying, here's three documents.
Okay, but I think staff feels comfortable, well, I, I guess, Caleb, do you feel comfortable what you have, starting the conversation?
Madam Mayor, I think I can put together some of what Councilman Borton said, and has been said, and take those three documents. What I'm not real comfortable is then, you know, packaging them and calling that a plan without some, you know, I need, I need somebody else to, like, you know, stamp that plan and go, yep, this is the plan, but we can take kind of what we already have and package that up, and, and Councilman Mylum even said, you know, these are some of what we've already done, the work that's gone into this, and some notes on, hey, we got to go horizontal here because it's constrained, and, and some of those things, like, this is preferred because of that, and we've talked to them, and not them. So yeah, Madam Mayor, to answer your question, I think we can start to beef up this plan to make it a plan. What, what I, what I think we'll, we'll need some real direction on is, again, plan implementation then. Is this, is the plan going to have something that says, every other year, planning staff submit a budget amendment or an enhancement, or, you know, or is the plan just more this, a, a map? And a map can be a plan, just there's no implementation, right, plan? And if that's what you want, then I'm going to struggle with that, because I don't know what the implementation plan should be.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, hold, in, in just a moment. It, it sounds like you have enough to bring back, um, something in black and white to, to put in front of you so that we can, um, maybe have a dialogue on, on specifics.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think that's great, and I guess I'd, I'd offer to help work with staff so there's some collaboration on this to try and gel with where the council.
I think that would be awesome.
Thanks.
Okay, anything further on that? Okay, item 10E is a little bit easier in terms of, in front of you, you do have a PowerPoint presentation in the packet, and Colin, Colin is here to, um, give a brief overview.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am honored to be here this evening to present this item. As Madam Mayor indicated, you have a request in front of you from Mayor DeVeard to name field number one at Fuller Park in honor of Charlie Roundtree. And so Mr. Roundtree has, as you know, a long history of service to this community. Specific to parks, he's been a, a longtime supporter of parks, helped create the Parks and Recreation Department in which I now work, um, also helped create the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission, to which he was the very first council liaison, um, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, I'm not sure the exact year, but, and then specifically at Fuller Park, Mr. Roundtree served on the Westernator Recreation District Board for almost 21 years, and was instrumental in the development of the park, of Fuller Park, and then spent time coaching at Fuller Park in the MYB organization, and so, you know, got his hands dirty helping to maintain the park through that organization, and so has a, has a very long history of, at that park specifically, and that's why Fuller Park was specifically chosen to honor Mr. Roundtree. And so going through the, the PowerPoint, it's, this is the, the letter submitted by Mayor DeVeard, which you've had, which you have in front of you. Fuller Park, an overhead view, you can see, uh, field number one, right over here, it is the first park that you see as you come into the park, uh, entrance being up here on the north side. Overhead view of the, uh, of the field that we're talking about. And then this is just a sample, uh, this was from the Trace Leighton Field Ceremony when they put a plaque up at Settlers Park, but this just is being used as an example of what we might, uh, do at Fuller Park for Mr. Roundtree. Expecting to do that later this year, potentially, we, we will have some kind of a ceremony, no date set or anything like that, but planning to do that after the city takes ownership of the park October 1st. And so with that, I will stand for any questions that you might have, but the Parks and Recreation Department is wholeheartedly in support of this request, and so we would ask for your approval, and, and it was presented to the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission at their meeting on January 13th, where they unanimously, unanimously approved, recommending to the council approval.
Thank you, Colin.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I was, uh, in the preliminary discussions in regard to this with my good friend, Mr. Cavanagh, and the late Keith Byrd on a Parks tour, and we sat down, we chit-chatted about this, and I think this is a, um, a great idea. Charlie's a fantastic person, and he's a dedicated public servant, and he's done a lot for this community, especially as it relates to Fuller Park and its history, so, I, along with others, is, or, I, I would be in full support of this, and I think it's a great idea.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, Colin, appreciate you being here.
We, we needed someone to carry that on.
I appreciate that.
Sorry, Dean.
Although that kind of reckons back to, to the seat to my left.
Madam Mayor, I, I just wanted to pass on my appreciation to, to you for that recommendation for the Parks Department, Parks Commission. This is one of those no brainers. I guess my only question is, he's okay with this?
Absolutely, yes.
Then let's make up like a big bust of his face.
No.
Bigger the better.
Any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. So you do have a request in front of us for approval to name the Fuller Park ball field, um, the Charlie Roundtree field.
So moved.
What did you so move?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Approved the recommendation from the Parks Department to name the Fuller Park bar field, the Charlie Roundtree field. Is that correct? Field, zuh, uh, one field.
Single, singular.
Field.
Field one.
Second.
We have a.
And to name field number one, the Charlie Roundtree field.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Mylum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Item 10F is under Public Works Department.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes of your evening, this should be pretty brief. This is for the discussion of a Public Works Amendment related to an acceleration of a position that was originally planned for the FY 20 budget to accommodate a reorganization in the Water Division due to an unforeseen retirement. So we have a retirement coming up of our longest standing water employee, he's served the city for 38 years, um, and so he is retiring at the end of March, and so that gave us an unexpected opportunity to look at the organizational structure at Water, um, and this amendment is for the addition of a field service supervisor to support that reorganization effort. This position will be responsible for the city's meter program, which encompasses nearly three, uh, 37,000 meters, and includes activities such as supervising new meter installation, meter replacements, troubleshooting, testing, meter reading, and importantly, data processing to support our utility billing program. So this position will report to the Water Operations Manager, which is a newly reclassified position formerly called the Assistant Water Superintendent, um, under this reorganization that encompasses a broad and significant range of responsibilities, including the Maintenance Section, Construction Section, Operations, Meters, and Line Locating. So with the continued growth of the water system, the continued number of customers and meters, increasing regulatory pressure, uh, it was really important for us to look forward thinking at the water organization and develop and implement a structure that's similar to the one that we have at the wastewater department, that has a strong number two leader leading the operations section of the group. Additionally, I wanted to note that by moving this position, um, forward from the planned FY 20 budget, the Water Division would not be seeking any additional staff as part of the FY 20 budget process. So this amendment that you have in front of you is for $41,825, which is five months of salary for the new position in FY 19, and then several small operational costs such as computer and safety equipment. So with that, I would respectfully ask for your consideration for this amendment, and stand for any questions.
And Laura Ly, that, that budget amendment, you do have budget dollars in there, but because this sets up a new FTE, and, um, there is a budget impact for budget years moving forward, um, that, that difference is, is captured in the budget amendment.
Madam Mayor, that's correct.
Any questions?
Thanks for sticking with us.
Yeah, so I'll, and I, I think that the retirement was a little bit ahead of what was anticipated, but, um, certainly Chip has given years of excellent service to the Water Department, and, and he will be missed, his, his presence will be felt, lots of pride.
We've, we've thought a lot about how he, what he's seen in the 38 years in Meridian, and the growth that he's seen and the changes he's experienced is really significant, and we're really excited for him, but like, like you said, will be definitely missed.
Now, so we were doing the math, and, and it seems like he's really pretty old.
They tell me he started when he was like 11 or something.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the budget amendment for FY 19 in the amount of $41,825 for the Water Field Service Supervisor.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Mylum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11A is ordinance 19-1811. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian, ordinance number 19-1811, an ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 7-2-9B regarding community service officers enforcement of provisions related to parking in spaces designated for persons with disability. Meridian City Code, Section 7-2-10A regarding community service officers enforcement authority for parking tickets and procedures, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, any questions about this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
That we approve ordinance number 19-1811 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I motion a second to approve item 11A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Mylum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer. Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 11B is ordinance 19-1812. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian, ordinance number 19-1812, an ordinance file H 2017-0142, Summertown, for annexation of a parcel of land located in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 1, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 15.13 acres of land from RUT 2 TNR, Traditional Neighborhood Residential Zoning District, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, you've heard this read by title, are there any questions? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1812 with suspension of rules.
I motion a second to approve item 11B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Mylum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton. Councilwoman Palmer. Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Is there anything under item 12? We do have two upcoming events. Philly Cookoff is this Saturday at 11:00, the Meridian Speedway, and a coffee with the mayor next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. at True Hotel.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
For a potential future meeting topic, I'd love to have a discussion about, um, I know that the council tries to have kind of a hands-off as to what MDC does with, um, those that we represent as money, but I, I think with their plan to pursue a parking agreement with the railroad company, I think it'd be appropriate for us to, um, investigate ourselves the details and either give them the blessing to move forward and then keep pursuing it, or tell them, hey, we're not interested in taking over a lease when the URD sunsets. So I'd love to have that as a discussion so that we can give our opinion before they continue going to lots of effort if we decide that we'd rather them not.
Okay. Noted. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.